This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard.
For the we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Since 1974, Chuck Anderson Ford has proudly served the community's automotive needs. From new and pre-owned vehicles to parts and service, they've been there in the past and they'll be there in the future. Visit Chuck Anderson Ford today. Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
Good evening. It is 6:00 PM on the 17th day of November 2025, and I call a regular city council meeting to order. We will begin with an opening prayer offered by Pastor Shannon Green of the First United Methodist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Let's pray. Let us pray. Holy God, in this season of Thanksgiving, we acknowledge our many blessings. We are grateful to live and work and dwell in the city of Excelsior Springs. We are grateful for our hardworking leaders, city employees, first responders, educators, and medical providers. We are grateful for the freedoms we enjoy in this country and the ability to contribute to the processes of democracy. We give thanks for the many, many people who make this community special. Lord, we also know that we live in a broken and hurting world, and our town is not immune to the sins of others. We lift up to you the victims of crime, abuse, violence, and neglect. Bring justice to those who seek to do harm and comfort to those who suffer. We know that there are some in our own city who struggle to make ends meet and wonder where their next meal may come from. So stir us to generosity and compassion as we extend a helping need to those. We recognize that there are some in our city who are lonely, grieving, isolated, or sick. So extend your hand of peace, healing, and protection, and use us to care for them as we are able. Teach us to love our neighbors as we love ourselves. In this time tonight, guide the conversations being held and the decisions being made. Bring clarity, consensus, and understanding to everyone involved. Allow your light to shine in the dark places of our world and in our own hearts, and let your truth reign in our lives and in our community. Loving God, we thank you once again for all that you are and all that you have done for us. May we feel your spirit among us today and always. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Shannon.
Thank you, Mayor.
Could we have the city clerk deliver the roll call of council members, please?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. At this time, I will invite any visitors who would like to address the council.
And hearing no response to that invitation, I will move to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 3rd, 2025.
I move we approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting of November 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of approving those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose like sign. Those minutes are approved. And now I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it has been printed and presented before you this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Roll call Shannon?
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding the proposed reduction to sewer charges. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion that we open the public hearing for proposed reduction to sewer charges.
Second.
Roll call Shannon?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Be it noted that the public hearing is opened at 6:04 PM. We'll wait just a moment for anyone who may slip in the door and wish to speak. All right, seeing no activity, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close public hearing for proposed reduction of sewer charges. Second.
Roll call Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Public hearing regarding the proposed reduction to sewer charges is closed at 6:05 PM. Item number two on the agenda this evening is consideration of amending the scheduled fees related to sewer utility rates ordinance number 25-11-06, presenting the details of this ordinance as our Public Works Director Chad Birdsong. Welcome Chad.
Welcome to you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Through our annual budgeting process, we review the water and sewer fees to make sure we have adequate funds to maintain the distribution and collection system and maintain healthy reserves in each. It has been determined that a rate decrease is warranted for the sewer fund at this time. Pursuant to Missouri law, we posted a public notice hearing for 30 days prior to this public hearing that was just held. At this time, we are proposing the following adjustments to the sewer base and consumption fees, and they plan on going into effect January 1st of 2026. The current base rate is $24.63, and we are proposing a reduction down to $24.23. The consumption rate currently is at $1,208 per thousand gallons, and we're looking to reduce that to $1,188 per thousand. That's for inside-city limit users. The outside city limit users is one and a half times that, so the base rate's $36.95. It'll be dropping to $36.35, and the consumption rate's $1,812 per thousand, and will drop to $1,782 per thousand. As you read, the ordinance is attached. The affidavit is included, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments for Chad regarding the reduction of sewer rates? Hearing none, we have before us an ordinance amending the schedule of fees, Title I, Appendix A, Table 810 of the Municipal Code related to sewer utility rates. I will entertain a motion to take ordinance number 25-11-06 to second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to take ordinance 25-11-06, consideration of amending the schedule of fees related to sewer utility rates to second reading.
Second.
Roll call Shannon?
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And for that second reading, we have before us an ordinance amending the schedule of fees, Title I, Appendix A, Table 810 of the Municipal Code related to sewer utility rates. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25-11-06.
I move that we approve ordinance number 25-11-06, consideration of amending the schedule of fees related to sewer utility rates.
Second.
Roll call Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Ordinance number 25-11-06 has been approved. Item, Agenda item number three is consideration of approving a task order for Lamprey Neerson Incorporated related to the 2026 Streetscape Maintenance Project Resolution Number 1621. And again with the details, it's Chad Birdsong.
All righty. Lamprey Neerson has prepared task order number 2025-1 for engineering services from our on-call contract for the 2026 Streetscape Maintenance Project funded through our Transportation Trust Fund. Next year's project's area includes additional base repairs, chip sealing, a reconstruction on One Street, and U-Bass work in various areas as defined by the attached map. We are following the recommendation of our pavement condition index report, which defines the direction of maintenance that we'll be focusing on based on the amount of funding available for street maintenance in the upcoming years. A detailed description of the work to be performed can be found in the adjoining task order. The fee for this work for the next year is $129,350 for the engineering and design, along with construction, administration, and observation. We will be coming back in 2026 to get the approval of the actual construction, once that goes out to bid. The Transportation Trust Authority met on November 10th, discussed and approved the funding for this project to include $130,000 for engineering and design, and $1,270,000 for construction. Resolution is attached, and I'd be happy to give any more answers if you have any more questions.
Hearing no questions, we have before us a resolution approving a task order for Lamprey Neerson Incorporated relating to the 2026 Streetscape Maintenance Project. I will entertain a motion regarding Resolution Number 1621.
I move we approve Resolution Number 1621, consideration of approving a task order for Lamprey Neerson Inc. related to the 2026 Streetscape Maintenance Project.
Second.
Roll call Shannon?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution Number 1621 is approved. Agenda item number four is consideration of filing dates for municipal election, April 7th, 2026. And our city clerk, Shannon Stroud, will present the details of this ask, or this recommendation for the filing dates to the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is an item that we do each year for the opening of filing dates for the municipal election of April 7th, 2026 this year. The opening begins for candidates on Tuesday, December 9th, at 8:00 AM, and it will close December 30th, also a Tuesday, at 5:00 PM. There are two spots open this year, two positions that are vacant. Filing is done with the city clerk. The notification is attached. It goes in the paper for twice to be published, giving the filing day, locations, and the date of the election. The dates are November 28th, December 5th, November 26th, and December 3rd in all local papers. And a simple motion is needed to start this.
Okay. Thank you, Shannon. Any questions for Shannon? I will entertain a motion to approve the filing dates for municipal election, April 7th, 2026.
I make a motion to approve the filing dates for the municipal election of April 7th, 2026.
Second.
Roll call Shannon?
Councilman Spear?
I'm looking over here.
I thought, why move?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Number five on the agenda is consideration of approval of application of liquor license for Three Olives Italian Kitchen and Bakery. Our Chief of Police, as well as our Liquor Control Agent Chief Doll, will present the details of this liquor license request to the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. This is a liquor license application for Three Olives Italian Kitchen and Bakery located at 101 West Broadway. Ms. Karen Erickson, managing officer for the establishment, has applied for a liquor license for this establishment. This is a new business, and therefore it's a new liquor license application. This application's been reviewed, and it does meet the city's requirements for the license. The business is still in the process of obtaining its business license and occupancy license from the city, as well as their permanent license from the state of Missouri. So this would be contingent upon them obtaining their Missouri state license, as well as their proper city licenses. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Again, this needs, this requires a simple motion to approve this liquor license. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve consideration approval of the application of liquor license for Three Olives Italian Kitchen and Bakery.
Second.
Roll call Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. I'm excited to possibly have another eatery in Excelsior Springs. I'm kind of a foodie. Agenda item number six is consideration of purchase of new police vehicle, Resolution Number 1622. And again, it's Chief Doll with the details.
Yes, sir. The police department is seeking approval to purchase a 2026 Ford Police Interceptor Utility All-Wheel Drive vehicle, which will replace an aging vehicle in our patrol fleet. In compliance with the city's purchasing policy, we obtained three bids for each vehicle, for this vehicle. The bid information is as follows. Chuck Anderson Ford, Excelsior Springs, Missouri, was the low bid at $45,134. If approved, this purchase would be funded using monies from the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. The PSSD Oversight Committee has reviewed and approved the purchase, confirming it aligns with established usage guidelines for these funds.
Any questions for Chief regarding the purchase of this vehicle?
No questions, but I will make a comment. Last week, the mayor and I, along with the city manager, had an opportunity to visit with Lieutenant Rennie. Thank you, Councilman Rennie, from the police department regarding purchasing police vehicles and their plans and procedures and all that. And I appreciate his open and candid conversation that he had with us, and it went a long ways.
It did. All right. We have before us a resolution approving the purchase of a 2026 Ford Interceptor Utility All-Wheel Drive from Chuck Anderson Ford in the amount of $45,133 and 98 pennies. I will entertain a motion regarding Resolution Number 1622.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 1622, consideration purchase of new police vehicle.
Second.
Roll call Shannon?
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Resolution Number 1622 is approved. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Agenda item number seven is consideration of agreement with RCX Sports LLC, Resolution Number 1623. And our Excelsior Parks Rec and Community Center Director Nate Williams will present the details of this resolution before the council. Welcome, Nate.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Sorry I wasn't able to join you on Friday to discuss any questions, but this is pretty straightforward, I think. In an attempt to continue to improve our recreation programs, this is one of those steps. So RCX offers essentially like supplemental curriculum for coaches, nicer uniform kits for players, some equipment is provided as well. So RCX, one of their branches is MLS, so MLS Go would essentially be our partner for our spring and fall soccer leagues. So it'll offer a full uniform kit to each player. Each team will receive a number of soccer balls. Bless you. And we don't have to increase our prices that we currently offer. So we pay essentially RCX per player fee, which goes to the kits and the curriculum and all of that. But with where we are priced at now, we would not have to raise our prices. So that was kind of one of the big stipulations for us, was that we continue to offer the lowest rate in the city probably for recreational program. So that will not have to change.
Any questions or comments for Nate regarding Resolution 1623? Hearing none, we have before us a resolution approving an agreement with RCX Sports LLC for operation of the MLS Go youth soccer program. I'll entertain a motion regarding Resolution Number 1623.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 1623, consideration of agreement with RCX Sports LLC.
Second.
Roll call Shannon?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Resolution Number 1623 is approved. Thank you, Nate. Agenda item number eight is consideration of copier lease agreement for Community Center and Police Department, Resolution Number 1624. And our city manager, Molly McGovern, will present the details of this ask to the council. Molly?
Thank you. Clint, our technology director, has taken a look at the copier agreements that were expiring at the police department and the community center. He found a better bid that then was offered through a purchasing co-op. And in this proposal that he is presenting, as it is now, when you exceed the number of copies per month, you pay additional. He's averaging this over a year's time, so that's an expectant savings that we should have. He's saying the proposed rates are approximately 11% to 20% lower than the bid pricing through the co-op, and it should improve our equipment and efficiency by going to a lower operating cost and averaging over a year rather than monthly.
Molly, what is the name of the company that is going to be handling the company?
Sumner One is the name of the company, and they are the authorized Conica Monolta dealer.
Okay. Just fishing for how to pronounce that.
Yeah.
Should have been a space in there, in my opinion, but.
Well, unless that's how they have their name, so that I don't know.
All right. We have before us a resolution approving two unified lease and service agreements with Sumner One Incorporated. I'll entertain a motion regarding Resolution Number 1624.
Move to approve Resolution 1624, consideration of copier lease agreement for Community Center and the police department.
Second.
Roll call Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Resolution Number 1624 is approved. Number nine on the agenda is consideration of agreements with Strata Architecture and Preservation for Architectural Services regarding the Hall of Waters Building, Resolution Number 1625. And again with the details, it's our city manager.
Okay, thank you. As you probably know, major improvements will always be needed in the Hall of Waters. We completed a facility plan several years ago to help itemize the cost of improvements and prioritize what's needed. So currently in tonight's proposal, we're offering architectural services for four projects that we think that we can undertake for this building. One is the well room. A couple of years ago, we made improvements for the well room support of the front yard, so we can use the front yard courtyard again. That was intended to be a temporary solution, maybe lasting, say, three years, something like that. We think it looks pretty darn supportive, so that might be an underestimation. But this would study, what is the permanent solution that's needed? And we've found that there's lots of opinions and people that want to weigh in on this subject, so our architects are going to provide some opportunity for public meetings, so people can participate in that discussion. And the committees of interest that currently exist include the Hall of Waters, Friends of the Wells, and a Struck Preservation Commission. So we'll provide opportunities for people to weigh in and come up with a solution that would be constructed at a later date. So the second project is the tower, and we need to focus some assessment on the tower, which is also the existing boiler draft system, to identify what modifications or repairs would be needed to the tower. And we're in hopes that this also would be a construction project following up with the completion of the assessment. The third project is a little bit new for us, is the east wing. It's a newer issue due to the windows pushing out of the openings in the conference room and the women's restroom. So we need to do an assessment of the damaged concrete walls and windows at the southeast corner of the building, and to fully understand what improvements are needed. So this would likely be a temporary solution in place, depending upon what the problem and solution needs to be for construction at a later time. But they'll have to remove some of the windows to be able to assess the problem, and we may not be in a position to put things back the way you permanently would like them. So we're just gonna have to see how this is gonna go. The fourth project is dehumidification in the basement, which is something we wanted to do at the end of the construction project when we improved the foundation. And we were getting different pricings, so we want to go back and reassess this. And so this will give us a clear direction on what to spec for the dehumidification in the basement. So for cash flow purposes, we would be using capital improvements, sales tax, and I assume that we could do the architectural work and the dehumidification in this budget year, likely with construction for the other projects happening over a couple of years from now. Over the next couple of years, not waiting two years, but over the next couple of years. So for this is to, what's before you is architectural cost of $151,155 for the architectural work. And we would be back in front of you with what the solutions might be.
Just to clarify, this resolution really doesn't establish a priority of the projects?
No.
It just gives us a cost estimate, so we knew.
Yeah. We think these are what we can afford based on past estimates, but as I said, the window project came in, wasn't expecting that to be a project. And it came in when we were in the midst of seeking the proposals for these other projects. And I couldn't determine if the tower or the windows was more immediate, but we'll learn that as we go through this study.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, is will the architect be in a position to help us prioritize what needs the immediate attention versus what might be.
I think once we learn kind of what's, kind of what's at stake in either project, we'll understand better.
Any other questions or comments for Molly? Hearing none, we have before us a resolution approving four professional services proposals from Strata Architecture Incorporated. I'll entertain a motion regarding Resolution Number 1625.
I move we approve Resolution Number 1625, consideration of agreements with Strata Architecture and Preservation for Architectural Services regarding the Hall of Waters Building.
Second.
Roll call Shannon?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Resolution Number 1625 is approved. Agenda item number 10 is consideration of adding Chapter 171 of the Municipal Code relating to the Public Safety Sales Tax Committee Ordinance Number 25-11-06. to the Public Safety Sales Tax Committee, ordinance number 25-11-07. And before we move forward on this, I would like to recommend that we table this. I'll leave that in the form of a motion until the next meeting and direct the city manager to make some changes regarding the allocation percentages that we have in this ordinance.
I make motion to table ordinance 25-11-07.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Spear.
Yes.
Councilman Rennie.
Yes.
Councilman McGovern.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John.
Yes.
Mayor Swan.
Yes. Agenda item number 10, ordinance number 25-11-07, has been tabled until further meeting. Agenda item number 11 is consideration of fiscal year 2026 budget amendment, ordinance number 25-11-08. And again, that is our city manager with the details of this budget amendment.
Okay, thank you. After our budget was approved, the fiscal year 26 budget was approved by the city council probably about a month ago, our finance director was reviewing some of the year-end revenues and has provided a more educated estimate for the general fund revenues for property taxes, electric franchise, motor fuel tax, and the motor vehicle sales tax. This change enables the city to provide a 2.9% cost of living adjustment for our city employees, which is consistent with the COLA projected by the federal government. So included, the budget presented will increase revenues to the general fund by $259,415. The cost of living adjustment by fund would cost the general fund $161,490. Park and recreation, $13,762. Construction services, $14,490. The public safety sales tax transfer, which is a transfer out of public safety based on percentage of personnel cost to the general fund, would be $25,748. The community center set $26,005. Water, $26,215. Sewer, $17,384. And refuge, $1,902. Please consider adopting this budget amendment to extend COLA cost of living adjustments to all city employees. Retroactive talk to the first.
Any questions or comments regarding this?
Yep. If I remember correctly, during the budget process, you were asking for all the departments to cut their budget so they could be within the reasonable amount. Anyways, the fire department apparently cut out all their meals.
They did.
Is this added some money back in?
I did not add anything back in. That is possible, but I have not made those adjustments back in. So currently, with all the math done, the general fund would have a surplus revenues over expenses of around $35,000.
Were there any other departments that cut out all their meals?
Each department made cuts. The fire department's the only one that cut their meals related to when they would go to trainings.
So how can we address that?
I can bring back adjustments for your consideration.
At a future meeting?
I can do that. Is that what you want me to do?
Well, I'd just like to see it taken care of, one way or another. I don't think it's fair to ask a firefighter or an EMT or a paramedic to go to training and them have to pay for their own meal.
Okay.
And if there's any other departments.
There are, each department made cuts.
Right. Did anybody else cut their meals?
I don't believe that's the case.
Okay.
But that said, each one made cuts that were important to them. So I will not just look at that. I'll need to look at everything.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think we should look at that in conjunction with input from the fire department because if the focus was dollars, not what you're cutting.
Right.
We didn't make the decision of what the cut was.
Right.
So, you know, if we're looking to reinstate that portion of the cut, then does that need to be redirected to?
There is room to do that. So I would ask each of the departments in the general fund to relook at that.
That makes sense.
Well, I would just like to make a comment. Thank you, Vonda, for digging deep and finding that. And feel free to find some additional.
Dollars other times.
I work on it every day.
I know you do.
And the only thing I was going to add to that is, you know, budgeting is a moving target. So, you know, when you start that in May and you are still in your year and you are bringing revenues in, so when Molly and I had talked before this was found, that, you know, we knew something didn't seem quite right, and so that's why I dug in.
Appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. All right, we have before us an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026. I will entertain a motion to take ordinance number 25-11-08 to second reading.
I move, oh, wait.
Go ahead.
I move we take ordinance 25-11-08, consideration of fiscal year 2026 budget amendment to second reading.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Spear.
Yes.
Councilman McGovern.
Yes.
Councilman Rennie.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John.
Yes.
Mayor Swan.
Yes. And for that second reading, we have an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25-11-08.
I move that we approve ordinance number 25-11-08, consideration of fiscal year 2026 budget amendment.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie.
Yes.
Councilman McGovern.
Yes.
Councilman Spear.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John.
Yes.
Mayor Swan.
Yes. Ordinance number 25-11-08 has been approved. Moving on to agenda item number 12, October revenue report and financials for review. And it is our finance department director, Vonda Floyd, with the details.
Good evening, mayor and council. Within your council packets, the finance department provided for your review details of appropriations and revenues for the month of October 2025. And that's the first month of our new fiscal year 2026. The appropriations are all in accordance with the city's purchasing policy and are as follows. Appropriations for October the 2nd, 2025, $297,599.31. Appropriations for October 9th, 25, $1,555,496.93. And for that particular appropriation week, I wanted to highlight that there was a dry fork payment of 900, over 905,000. And there was also fiscal year 25 street skate payment of over 253,946. And then we have received in the month of November, a large revenue payment for that grant on dry fork of 741,112 that you will see in November's presentation. Appropriations for October the 16th, $230,921.01. Appropriations for October the 23rd, $119,145.76. And appropriations for October the 30th, $546,481.93. And within that, there was a $194,000 payment for, it was part of the annual tower maintenance contract. Payroll on October the 15th, $432,897.58. Payroll on October the 31st, $419,100.32. For total appropriations for October, $3,604,642.84. And total revenues received for the month of October were $2,127,690.76. Glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Just one slight little, on the appropriations for October 9th, $1,558,496.
Did I not say that?
$555, but that's.
I apologize. One, I'm going to correct it right now, $1,558,496.93.
For us being counters. I wouldn't have slept today.
I don't mind being corrected at all. I don't mind.
No worries. A few thousand bucks.
It's a lot.
It's everything, right?
It is.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vonda. Agenda item number 13, it's party time. So I'm going to ask Ms. Laura Meis to join me in front of the dais.
And we have joining us online David Burton from the University of Missouri Extension, who has some remarks that he'd like to make about Missouri Good Neighbor Week.
Welcome, David.
Hello, great to be here. I hope you all can hear me fine. Thank you for this opportunity. Well, we have three awards to present tonight, all from Missouri Good Neighbor Week. The first one is, we'd like to proudly recognize the city of Excelsior Springs as one of Missouri's most neighborly cities. There were six cities that earned that status this year. And Excelsior Springs demonstrated that neighboring is not just a once-a-week campaign, but rather it's a way of life in that city there. There were multiple block parties, community-wide celebrations year-round, and a year-round approach to this personal connection and civic pride. We can see clearly in the reports that were made that Excelsior Springs residents don't just participate in neighboring, they lead. The neighbors nominate each other for statewide awards, they hosted gatherings, supported local businesses, and all of that helps strengthen the social fabric of their streets through really small acts of character and welcome and connection. And those things really add up. Just as a personal footnote, I'd like to add that one of the things that really makes Excelsior Springs unique is that this effort never stops. It's not just during Missouri Good Neighbor Week. The city continues to support neighboring campaigns throughout the year, encouraging residents to know one another, look out for each other, celebrate one another, and that the result is a community where.
Oh, no, the digital freeze.
Community where.
There he's back.
We didn't hear the last part of that, David. We had a digital freeze here. Well, I'm going to present this plaque to Ms. Laura. Is that okay, David, if I present it to Laura?
Absolutely. The city of Excelsior Springs, 2025 Most Neighborly City.
Second year in a row, I might add.
That is in the mid-sized city category, I believe. We use the Missouri municipality size categories for those awards.
Yes, mid-sized city.
All right. Well, there were two other awards that were earned in Excelsior Springs this year, and Laura wanted to have us present all of those at once. We added a category for businesses this year, a chance for people to nominate a business that was considered neighborly. We listed some criteria for that, and it may be no surprise to you that one of the two state winners is Other Trails Coffee. They've transformed a local coffee and bookshop into a welcoming hub where neighbors meet for friendship, conversation, games, support, and connection. And in an era where many communities struggle to find places where people can slow down and truly get together, Other Trails has created exactly that, a space that strengthens relationships and nurtures a sense of belonging. So the focus or the hope with these Missouri Neighborly Business Awards is simple. We want to recognize businesses that don't just sell something, but help create trust and connection in their community. Other Trails is doing that on a daily basis. We think that is mighty of celebration.
Congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you.
Great place for coffee and conversation. And some yummy breakfast items on my hands.
Fabulous American.
Yes.
Well, a great place for connection. I've seen that firsthand and was thrilled to see that they were nominated out of the community. And then likewise, during Missouri Good Neighbor Week, we had 140 nominations from across the state for Missouri's most engaged neighbors. And we selected 20 again this year to recognize from across the state, all types of different situations. But that's what we want to celebrate here with the last award from Excelsior Springs, Robbie Farabee. Thank you. Style, and especially his remarkable sidewalk chalk art. And I understand that began in 2022 with the gift of chalk from a friend, and it quickly became a movement of sort of beauty and encouragement and community pride. You saw Robbie's chalk art everywhere. I know I saw it when I was in Excelsior Springs this fall, a Robbie Farabee original, I believe is what I. And it's a great example of creating belonging, a great example of what one individual can do, and whether he's just walking around downtown greeting neighbors or doing chalk art or performing at the theater, he's a great example of engaged neighbor. I want to read something that his nominator wrote about him. The nominator wrote, Robbie brings people in Excelsior Springs together through his sidewalk chalk art and his friendly nature. We are blessed to have him. So the judges felt like he was certainly one of the top 20 most engaged neighbors in the state of Missouri and worthy of recognition and a prize check as well.
The council, a check for $100, that ought to buy a little bit of chalk. Did you get it? Laura, do you have any comments?
Yes, we are just so thrilled that Excelsior Springs has really shown up for neighboring and so excited to have Robbie. Every city should have a Robbie. And we're so blessed and so thankful that he's part of our community. And we'd like to invite everyone to stay after and celebrate with us with some cookies. All right. Thank you, David.
Thank you for the chance to join us.
I love it when I walk out of my bed and breakfast on mornings where Robbie has drawn plates of eggs and bacon and a picture of a bed to greet my neighbors. That's a wonderful thing. Thank you, Robbie, for everything you do for our community. And with that, we will enter into comments, and we will begin with our city manager.
Okay. Well, just one, I just wanted to let you all know that Laura has been appointed to the Marx Commission on Aging. So that's going to be important for our community, and Laura has a lot to share with them. So we're very excited about this appointment.
We will begin with remarks from the council. We'll start down here with Councilman Rennie.
Well, I say tis the season for praise and thanksgiving. And I just would want to encourage everyone in our community to take the time this next few weeks, this next whole season, to not focus on what we lack or what problems or issues, but to focus on what we have, and particularly our neighbors, and to just go out of their way to praise someone and to make thankful statements to each other of what you have to be thankful for. for. I'm just, I love this season, I love this time of year.
Thank you, Councilman Rennie, Councilman McGovern.
I appreciate the award winners, all that you've done in this community, and what I'm sure going to continue to do, and I love your artwork, it's fantastic, and I appreciate Ms. Meis on all that you have done to move this in the right direction, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Councilman Spear?
Well, in that same vein, there is a lighted Christmas parade coming up this weekend, so I would just encourage everyone to extend an invite to family and friends to come and join. Everyone that comes just thoroughly enjoys it, it grows every year, and I think this year will be one of the best yet, looking forward to it.
Absolutely. Mayor Pro Tim, what say you?
Well, I say congratulations to those that won awards, that's really cool that we could take three categories.
Out of three.
Yeah, I thought that was kinda nice, yeah, one of the trifecta. And the other thing I noticed was in Molly's official yesterday, that Carol Hunter has been here forty years with the city.
She did retire this year, but she stayed part-time.
Okay. I'm wondering, if you're a nine-one-one operator, how many calls did you take over forty years?
Probably hard to measure.
And how many of them were to say hello, I wanna know how you're doing kind of call? You know, I've got a feeling that wasn't the case.
Yeah.
Yeah, so congratulations to her.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
All right, and I will just echo all the congratulations that's been offered, I love Other Trails. Had a meeting with our brand-new pastor at Episcopal Baptist Church the other day, and he said, I always judge a coffee shop by how well they do an Americano. So after his second sip, I said, well, what's the verdict? He goes, spot on. So congratulations, you gained another happy customer. And Robbie, it's always a joy to see your artwork wherever I go, it's a congratulations. And congratulations, Laura, on your new appointment, and we look forward to the fruit of everything that you have to offer to Mark. And with that, I will also echo the comment about the lighted parade. My grandkids think it's kind of a big deal, the pawpaw gets to light the Christmas tree.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
It is a big deal, so I can't wait, look forward to that every year, and I'm fortunate the bits to turn the lights on the bed and breakfast, but I'm gonna hold off until we light Excelsior up. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment? Well, hold on, let's take a roll call on that.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
You're gonna be overruled.
We've had way too much fun.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes, we are adjourned for cookies and Kool-Aid.